Morning, everyone. I ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Dear gracious and almighty God, we thank you for the day you have granted. We pray for your guidance over the meeting. We pray for our farmers today as they labor in the fields. May they have a good harvest this year that is plentiful. Lord, today we also celebrate ones in the county for longevity and their service. Bless and guide them in their work. We also honor one that is retiring. We thank you for his humble service privately and publicly in his community. Lord, we ask you to bless him as he enters a new season of life. Lord, we also celebrate national probation in parolee. Yesterday, we were honored to greet these officers and celebrate them. We thank you for the men and women on the front and back ends of the criminal justice system. The population that our parole agents encounter daily have made poor choices in the direction. Many of their lives are turned in a positive direction through interaction with those that serve. We pray for their safety and ask you to provide them guidance and wisdom as they work daily with the freedoms of those clients. May the ones that need guidance reach out and value the help that is offered. We thank you for those professionals that are called on to help you help those in need. These are the workers that see the good in people and the value in life. And we ask that you leave us to this day. We ask you these things. We humbly pray in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public for which you stand, for my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We convene commissioners of public meetings this time and we ask for approval and minutes of the previous meeting. All favor say aye. Aye. So carry on. Anyone put a comment on agenda items only at this time? Here you go. Move on.
We have a few employee service awards today. Starting out, we have Mark Anderson from the assessment department. He's receiving a tenure pin today.
Do we have anybody? Brooke here?
I have Steve. Mark's in the back.
Hi, Mark. Did you think your boss over at working?
Oh, she's on vacation.
She's on vacation. Well, Mark, we have interacted with you several times. I have personally. You're the ultimate professional. You do a fantastic job over there. It's a difficult job, often with angry residents. And we want to thank you for de-escalating a lot of situations and doing a fantastic job for the county.
Yeah, a bit of those remarks. The department has taken on a lot of different responsibilities since the, I would say, once Tom left and Casey, and it just, it just seems to be running smoother with a lot more responsibilities. And you've come, we've come through a tough time in 2019 as well as 2020. And your efforts are recognized and hopefully we get to your concerns here as soon as possible. Thank you.
I want to thank you also, Mark. You did step up on that tax claim bureau and you've done a great job at it. And sometimes like last week, we might have disagreed with the recommendation, but we appreciate the work you put into it. And as Commissioner Metzger said, just interacting with the public in a situation that's always fraught with anger, even when it's a tiny amount, right? Because sometimes people think about the principle of it. So we appreciate that you recognize that. For 10 years, you've been doing that. We want to say thanks.
So we have certificate and a pin if you'd like to come up. Do you have any words you'd like to add?
Why don't you take a minute and tell the public what you do? Just because I think it's important for them to know the work behind the face.
So I actually officially started within the assessment office back in 2005. And we worked for a private firm and then I still think my first day as a county employee is probably the greatest day I ever had. Because it happened to be July 4th was the official start date. So I have vacation day on my first official day of job. But my titles are Director of Tax Claim and Deputy Chief Assessor for Tax Assessment. As you can tell, very popular departments. But no, we keep very, we keep very busy. You know, we have a wonderful staff over in that office. We do, and we do deal a lot with the public, especially now over the last 12 months. You know, we have, we have our field people that go out. They verify any kind of construction that is going on within the county. For two people working side by side, they are extremely efficient and do such a wonderful job. And then our office staff itself, the amount of flood of questions that come in, right-to-know requests that we get, they just put themselves forward and it's amazing to see the kind of relationships, especially someone like Pam, who's been with the tax claim office forever. She knows so many people on a first-name basis. You know, she has days of the week down that she knows that they are going to be coming in to see them. And so it's, it's, it's quite the experience, you know, just going through day-to-day, dealing with the delinquent taxes. And especially right now, like our annual appeal period is open. So then going on the other side of it and dealing with the appeals.
I'm sure you hear a lot of hard stories from people as to why they couldn't pay their taxes.
I have one that I am, I gotta get ahold of you to get on the agenda for next week. And it is by far the most elaborate, but very, it's a very true, serious situation that has occurred. So, but yeah, there are, there are a lot of, lot of excuses that come in. But then there's a lot of honesty as well on people's behalf. And one of the truest things I ever heard somebody say was, "I can't make my school payment, my school tax bill payment in three installments. I just can't. I bring it to you because I know I can do it over seven months." And so we have these agreements that people can come in and get involved in to ease the financial strain upon themselves. Even though they are looking at interest and penalties and fees that get tacked on, it's just an easier method for them to maintain their balance in daily life.
You know, Mark, we're sitting in a seat cap meeting with the assessment taxation committee yesterday. And I believe it was House Bill 264 or something like that, where we, we will not support that. It's cumbersome piece of legislation. And it just, it's kind of like they're throwing their hands up and saying, "Property tax is the only equitable way of taxing people." And it may be, but there are so many other states that do additional things for its people. Such as there are states where seniors over the age of 65, they pay half of the taxes. Okay, there are caps and reassessments where people, you know, when you talk about the third that's going to get the increase, they're capped as for as the increase. So it isn't so brutal. And those are the things that we still have to explore. And we hope that in the near future that you can give us some, some insight as to some recommendations or even, you know, telling us what you, you think and what you see are some of the major issues concerning our residents. So again, you know, you're doing a fantastic job and we look forward to talking to you in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
We have another tenure pin for Cody Beck from the prison.
Cody, Brad?
Morning, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today to recognize and honor Sergeant Cody Beck. Cody was hired at the prison back on July 11th of 2011 as a correctional officer. And he came to us with some unique qualities. He had both a law enforcement background and he had a medical background. So correctional officers provide all of those, as you well know. And so Cody was a unique applicant and one that we were very excited to bring on board. During his tenure as a correctional officer, he was extremely dependable and very reactive to situations within the prison. There were at least two occasions, one in 2015 and one in 2017, where Cody was one of the first officers to respond. And he provided a lifesaving measure to save an inmate. And unfortunately, we hear too many negative stories about how correctional officers don't do those types of things. But Cody's a proven example of somebody that does. And he is, he's been a valued employee in those ways, among many others. In 2015, he also was involved in a situation where there were two inmates that were committed to the prison. Both came in under the influence of narcotics that we weren't aware of when they were committed, but very quickly declined. And Cody was one of the first officers to respond and recognize that and was able to assist with our medical department in getting them the medical care that they needed to save their lives. So he's been very influential in not only being a valued member of our team, but in saving lives at the county prison. In September of 2018, Cody received a much deserved, a well-deserved promotion to the position of relief sergeant, and that's a position that he holds today. He is very well-respected among the prison staff. And I believe he's very well-respected among the inmate population, too. They understand his position and his role and he does it with professionalism. He's been a proven leader, not only with his abilities and skills, but just in the way he conducts himself on a daily basis. And he's a true asset to the prison team. So I'd like to congratulate Cody and thank him for his service to the iconic county prison.
So Cody, you're in a very tough profession that most people wouldn't even think about entertaining. And it's a profession that works weekends and nights, double shifts. And it's, it's a dangerous job. You see a lot of the worst in society. And you live in that environment for as much as 16 hours a day. And your training and professionalism and being alert every day is what led to saving lives and being the ultimate professional. So we thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Hi, group. Scott, you know, what we found with Warden Shoemaker is that his COs and his staff and deputy wardens, you better live by the book, you know? I see that almost every week, that we have rules of conduct and ethics and you will stick to them. As Commissioner Metzger said, you work in an environment that is difficult and one that's confining, you know? To deal with some of the people that you have to deal with and some of the circumstances that arises. And I mean some horrific circumstances. 10 years is probably like 40. And I appreciate your service as we all do. And for the warden to praise you the way he did, it means something. So thanks for your service.
Cody, it sounds like from what the warden said, you find the way to see the best in all people. And not only to see the best in them, but to find a way to act on it. And for the people of the county, we thank you for doing that for 10 years and we hope you'll do it much longer into the future.
We also want to thank you and your colleagues for what you've done during COVID. Been trying times. You're confined in a building where some restrictions have been lifted on the outside and are not lifted on the inside. And it continues to manifest a difficult environment to work in. So thank you and your colleagues for that.
All right. And the last award we have, Scott Conkle is retiring after 35 years. We have a clock.
Morning. Want me to talk slower? Usually not. Today, I'm here to talk about Scott Warren Conkle. We all know each other's middle names because our sign-ons always involve our middle initial. Scott was hired on December 15th of 1985. He has 35 years, 7 months, and 6 days of service. I hope I can get through this without. He started part-time. Scott's a close friend, too. Started part-time, went full-time, was a trainer for many years. He was my trainer 21 years ago when I started. He was a supervisor and is retiring as the communications specialist. He has put in so many years and so much dedication and so much service to our community from the comm center and from the field as, you know, the fire chief. His entire life has been dedication to our community. There's a sign in the center that means a lot to me that I put up on the wall after I took over as communications manager. And it's a sign that says pride in gold letters. And each letter has a word that is associated with it. The P in pride stands for professionalism. The R is respect. The I is integrity. D is dedication. And E is empathy. And all of these words describe exactly what we expect from our, our employees and the service that they give to the citizens whenever they call. And these words are exactly what describes Scott Conkle. He has been a skilled professional all 35 years that he's worked for the county and every aspect that he's been there. From all of his part-time hours, when he had numerous jobs, he would still come in and work part-time. Of course, that was when I was 14, so I really don't remember that. The stories I've heard over the years, full-time, you know, as a trainer, he was an amazing trainer. I remember the first day I walked in on county police and sat down and he said, "It's yours." And I'm like, "What are you talking about?" And he said, "You're sitting there till you make a mistake." And I think I lasted like two hours before I used a 10 code, because I came from another police department where I used 10 codes. And he's like, "Get off the radio." And then we started officially training. But he just let me wing it until I made a mistake 21 years ago. So we couldn't do that anymore. Respect. Scott treats everybody with respect, which has in turn, everybody gives, everybody is respectful of Scott. He has earned so much respect from our community, from his coworkers, from everybody who's ever encountered him. There's, he shows everybody the respect and everybody gives him the same respect in return. Integrity, I can't even say. He's a man of morals and a man of conscience. And I think everybody sees that whenever they engage with Scott. Dedication. Dedication is unmatched. There's not a single time since I've been there that those pagers have gone off that Scott's not the first one there. Scott and I have raced from Montorsville numerous times over the years. It's, you know, let's see if you can get there first. I don't care if it's a call-off or a shift that needs filled or a storm that comes through. When that pager goes off and there's help needed, Scott's there always. In his latest capacity as, as communications specialist, if we have an equipment issue, you know, a lightning strike at a tower site where we have alarms going off, if there's an air conditioner problem in the back room and alarm goes off, you know, the comm center staff aren't equipped to handle that. And Scott's there within minutes. He's calling me. We're figuring out what we need to do. And he's there. He's always there. And empathy, the E for empathy. Never have I known him not to help a caller. He's always, always shows empathy, always sympathetic. And he is the same with his coworkers. There's not a single person over the years that Scott has not helped out. Anyone needs anything and Scott is always there. That's personal or at work. That's just how Scott is. It's what he does in his daily life, at his church, at his firehouse, at work, everything. So Scott should have a lot of pride. That pride absolutely carries over to his daily life, you know, his personal, his work, his career. He has a career that he should have a lot of pride in. I, I, he's made a lasting impression. I'm just, I'm going to stay short here because I just can't say enough about him. He's made a lasting impression on the center. He's going to be missed and he's going to leave an empty space that can't be filled, for sure. So Scott, I'm going to miss you. Everybody's going to miss you. And thank you for all that you've done for us.
Scott, we've been friends since we were kids. We grew up in a house two blocks, or two houses from my brother. And I've known you for 50 years. And it goes back to where you come from good stock. Your parents are amazing. And anyone knows anything about Montorsville, the Conkle name goes with Montorsville hand in hand. And you got a great family. Your service is to be admired. You've done nothing for yourself over the years. It's all about the community. You've done it with the fire hall. You've been on the school board forever. You've worked with the kids with softball. My father-in-law, who stands next to you in the choir, says you sing what great. He enjoys your laughter and conversations every Thursday night. And that friendship is neat to hear about. And you made friends with everyone that you've crossed paths with. And you're going to be missed here. You're going to be missed at the school. But there's a season for everything. It's time to move on to the next season and enjoy your kids and your wife, your amazing wife. She gives so much of herself to the community and the church. And I'm honored to call you a friend because you truly are. And thank you for everything you've done. We need more people like you in our community.
Who's the person that you replaced?
Dan Strath. Just, just talked to him. His mother passed away yesterday.
No, I was, I was. A lot of the times when, when we're losing a director or someone that's shoes are very difficult to replace, it's concerning for the commissioners because we, we need the advice and we need recommendations from the staff. And are we making the right decision? Well, we knew, we didn't have that issue with you. You, you were a person who took his job seriously. Everybody knew it. And finding a replacement was not difficult at all. We had a lot of confidence in you and what you did and what you stand for. And I'm sure, you know, I look at, I look at everyone in those departments from EMS, fire, as equals and as people that have more dedication to our community than any other skill or profession, you know? And that goes for doctors as well. We rely upon you and most of the people don't even know it, you know? But when you think about the responsibilities in the communication, you're a communication specialist. Dedication is unmatched. There's not a single time since I've been there that those pagers have gone off that Scott's not the first one there. Scott and I have raced from Montorsville numerous times over the years. It's, you know, let's see if you can get there first. I don't care if it's a call-off or a shift that needs filled or a storm that comes through. When that pager goes off and there's help needed, Scott's there, always. In his latest capacity as communications specialist, if we have an equipment issue, you know, a lightning strike at a tower site where we have alarms going off, if there's an air conditioner problem in the back room and alarm goes off, you know, the comm center staff aren't equipped to handle that. And Scott's there within minutes. He's calling me, you know, we're figuring out what we need to do, and he's there. He's always there. And empathy, the E for empathy. Never have I known him not to help a caller. He's always, always shows empathy, always sympathetic, and he is the same with his coworkers. There's not a single person over the years that Scott has not helped out. Anyone needs anything and Scott is always there. That's personal or at work. That's just how Scott is. It's what he does in his daily life, at his church, at his firehouse, at work, everything. So Scott should have a lot of pride. That pride actually carries over to his daily life, you know, his personal, his work, his career. He has a career that he should have a lot of pride in. He's made a lasting impression. I'm just, I'm gonna stay short here because I just can't say enough about him. He's made a lasting impression on the center. He's gonna be missed and he's gonna leave an empty space that can't be filled, for sure. So Scott, I'm gonna miss ya. Everybody's gonna miss you, and thank you for all that you've done for us.
Scott, we've been friends since we were kids. We grew up in a house two houses from my brother, and I've known you for fifty years. And it goes back to where, you come from good stock. Your parents are amazing, and anyone knows anything about Montorsville, the Conkle name goes with Montorsville hand-in-hand. And you got a great family. Your service is to be admired. You've done nothing for yourself over the years. It's all about the community. You've done it with the fire hall. You've been on the school board forever. You've worked with the kids with softball. My father-in-law, who stands next to you in the choir, says you sing what great. He enjoys your laughter and conversations every Thursday night. And that friendship is neat to hear about. And you made friends with everyone that you've crossed paths with. And you're gonna be missed here, you're gonna be missed at the school. But there's a season for everything. It's time to move on to the next season and enjoy your kids and your wife, your amazing wife. She gives so much of herself to the community and the church. I'm honored to call you a friend because you truly are, and thank you for everything you've done. We need more people like you in our community.
Who's the person that you replaced?
Dan Strath. Just talked to him. His mother passed away yesterday.
No, I was. A lot of the times when we're losing a director or someone that's shoes are very difficult to replace, it's concerning for the commissioners because we need the advice and we need recommendations from the staff. And are we making the right decision? Well, we knew, we didn't have that issue with you. You were a person who took his job seriously. Everybody knew it, and finding a replacement was not difficult at all. We had a lot of confidence in you and what you did and what you stand for. And I'm sure, you know, I look at, I look at everyone in those departments from EMS, fire, as equals and as people that have more dedication to our community than any other, skill or profession, you know? And that goes for doctors as well. We rely upon you, and most of the people don't even know, you know? But when you think about the responsibilities in the communication, you're a communication specialist. If we did not have that position or we did not have the right equipment and tools, can you imagine what your community would be like? Not a nice place to live. And I'd only thank you. I think, thank everyone in your department for the dedication that you give to the citizens of Lakeview County.
Scott Conkle, there you are. I want to thank you also. I haven't known you fifty years, only the five or six I've been here. But you've always been very straightforward and always had something to say that I knew that I could rely on for its veracity and for its insightfulness. And I really appreciated that. I think over thirty-five years, how many times, you must have many stories to tell of probably dealing with people in crisis, not just here, but certainly as a fire chief. And on behalf of the people of the county, I thank you for that, for what you've given the county and also for what you've given the community. So thank you, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Last week, I think it was last week, Hutch, you were here last week or two weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, and you gave a great presentation on what your department does, the overall public safety and the dedication. And many of your professionals are sitting behind you, Scott, and what you've done is just tremendous. We can't thank you enough. And the unscheduled time still blows me away. Twenty-nine hours. And for the entire staff, that's just, that's incredible. They're there, and they're there as double chefs, and they're the calm voice behind when you make that nine-one-one call. They get you through the crises until the help gets there. So thank you. Scott, come on up and say a few words.
First of all, I do want to thank the county for the opportunity to be an employee. It's been a great opportunity. As we've always said, we are a different group of people. We're a special breed. And we'll look at Forrest. Forrest started with us as a part-time TC. And I kind of use him as an example of where people go in life, you know? And he knows what we go through, and all those people who are there work dedicated hours that I'm just one, I'm one of the team. And I just thank my coworkers for the great place to work. I'm gonna miss them, but time to go. So, thank you.
Scott, due to the supply chain issues, the face of that clock's now.
Then you guys come on.
Then you come on. Hang on, we're gonna get one.
Everybody, bring everybody. William, come on up here, buddy.
I didn't even see.
Scott, you're hardly smiling. Real big one.
All right.
Thank you all.
There you go. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Accounts payable cash requirements report with Brandy Clemmons.
Morning, Brandy.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here to get your approval for the accounts payable cash requirements report for invoices due through seven twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one, to be paid on seven twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one in the amount of one million, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and forty-six cents.
Any questions?
And just to note that little under half of that is county general, six hundred and seventy-nine. The rest of it is, some of it's fifteen percent is RMS. We have some debt. That's county general, the debt.
Yeah.
Kind of tricked us there, but.
It's in a different fund, but yeah, the money's coming out of county general for that one. After I wrote county general, I should have probably just lumped the two together.
No, that's okay. It's actually helpful for us to see the debt service. Is that principal or?
That's principal and interest on, I believe that, is it twenty-twelve B? I think that one is what that one is. There'll be more coming. We have a bunch due here in August, so there'll be quite a few coming in probably next week.
Okay. Any questions? Here's not a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On their side? Aye, so carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Personnel actions with Roxanne Rico.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning, Ms. Yan.
At RMS transfer station, we have Justin Kance as a full-time replacement promotion, transfer station supervisor, pay grade seven, nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents an hour effective July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one. In the district attorney's office, Wendy Leon Breon, full-time replacement paralegal at a pay grade six, sixteen dollars and seventy-six cents an hour effective August second, twenty-twenty-one. In adult probation, Kayla Buckington as a full-time replacement, clip three, pay grade four, fifteen dollars and nine cents an hour effective July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one. And finally, at the prison, Christopher R. Page, full-time replacement, correctional officer relief, pay grade CO-one, seventeen dollars and forty-six cents an hour effective August first, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay. Any questions? Here, not a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
On their side?
Aye.
Carry. Thank you, Roxanne.
Thank you.
Informational items. Director McDermott's gonna take care of my action items today, so I will let Director McDermott take over.
Hey. Morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Just acknowledging that the county will be requesting bids for a building project at twenty-one oh-seven Lakeland Creek Road, M.D.J. Solomon's Building. So that's going out. We're also going out to bid for food products, typical cyclical action there. And then the county will also be requesting proposals for the production and delivery of absentee ballot and mail-in ballots to support election operations.
So could you give us an update on the cost at M.D.J. Solomon's Building?
If I remember the number, it's somewhere just shy of six hundred thousand, five ninety-eight and change.
Did that include the purchase price?
No, it does not.
So we're pretty much online as far as what we took out as far as bond for a busy building?
Yes.
And we should follow underneath that.
I talked to Director Maing yesterday, Ken George, and, oh, here you are, Ken. You want to come up and elaborate on the cost, materials?
Sure.
Because that's his order. More questions?
Yeah, we're running a little heavy on the material cost due to the increase of the construction materials. They have raised anywhere from four hundred to five hundred percent, but we are still holding well with the cost. But there's really not a whole lot, you know, to complete the job. We just buy in two buys and stuff like that. We end up like, I think we ordered like twenty-two of them. It was like eighteen hundred dollars for two-by-twelves. You know, it's just, the cost is outrageous at this point. We're kind of stuck in the middle of it right at this point trying to get the job done.
Thanks for the update.
And then, oh, are you done, Director? Four point zero, Krista McLaughlin has a information. Krista, are you on the line?
I am.
Okay.
Morning.
Good morning, commissioners. This is part of the twenty-twenty-one CBG program. We need to, I need to go over some information about the projects that were submitted for consideration for the twenty-twenty-one CBG program. The county will be receiving two hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred thirty dollars for the annual allocation. And the steps following today's review will be the actual project selection by the commissioners, which will happen in mid to late August. And then there will be a final hearing in September followed by action taken to actually submit the application. So the projects that have been submitted for twenty-twenty-one consideration are Stephanie continuing their homes in need program in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. The YWCA submitted an application for significant plumbing improvement to their, to their building. Their current system is from pretty much the original building. It's like ninety-two or some year old. That is brass and inoperable shut-off valve. So there's significant component to that. The CDB request there was a hundred fifty-seven, five hundred dollars. American Rescue Workers requested a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the final phase of their building renovation. Picture Rock Borough requested two hundred ten thousand dollars for Monkey Creek Bank stabilization recovery, just FYI, and working with the planning department. And they have helped pull in, pull in ten dots LTAP programs to help evaluate this particular project a little bit better. Montgomery Water Authority requested two hundred three thousand dollars for the Brook Street main, water main replacement. There is currently a survey underway to determine if that project will be eligible for CDBG funds. The Nippon Oaks Valley Village submitted a request for a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars for a private septic system upgrade. And that is at, that is a nursing home essentially in Limestone Township. And Old Byton Township submitted a request for twenty-eight thousand dollars for the Mill Lane EDA curb ramp installation project. So those are seven projects, all pretty viable, that have been submitted for consideration, and it's gonna be a tough year to make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Forrest, is there anything you'd like to add? I see in the audience here.
I'm only here because of the announcement about bidding out for print mail services in case there was a question.
Okay. Is there any questions, Forrest? Thank you. Thanks for being here.
So moving on to action items, Director McDermott's gonna take five point one.
Commissioners, taking your approval on a second amendment to the MOU between the county and Pennsylvania College of Technology. We had some minor design changes on the actual layout of the artwork, size of the sign, and that's just been memorialized in this amendment.
I want to thank the college again for being a partner with us in this project. Will add a lot of value to both organizations.
Okay, motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On their side?
Aye.
Five point two, Leslie Kilpatrick is to vote on RMS network and telephone infrastructure.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
We're asking your approval today for network hardware required for an upgrade at the landfill RMS to complete, and this will be the last part of our VoIP project. So we started it five, six years ago. We've done all the buildings. This will be the last hop for that VoIP project out at RMS. This is a CoStar's purchase for eighty-four thousand, two fourteen and forty-one cents. It is in our budget this year. So basically, what we're going to do is we're going to redo the network infrastructure, and then we would be able to install our phones for the VoIP upgrade.
So in the advantage, Leslie, just to help record life for the public, the advantage of doing the voiceover internet protocol in addition to the flexibility of being able to move phones from office to office, what are some of the other advantages?
So basically, it's an upgrade. Unfortunately, our phone system's so old at this point that some of the cabinets aren't supported. So it's more or less that it's an upgrade to the cabinets that we have today as well as being able to. I mean, it's obviously new equipment, you know, so.
Does it save us some money too in terms of not using the landline, going the voiceover internet protocol?
No, so basically, we're still keeping the landlines as they are today. This is an internal VoIP, if you will. So we're not actually using offsite. It's just, we're gonna use our network infrastructure for our phones, if you will.
Internally.
Internally, yeah.
So the calls are still coming into our network?
The same way they always have.
And then they're being dispersed within, to the voiceover internet protocol?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, can I motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
On their side?
Aye.
Thanks, commissioners.
Thank you, Leslie.
Five point three, Ken George, vote on amendment to agreement, turnkey construction flood wall.
Morning, commissioners. This is an amendment to the agreement we had with Turnkey at the flood wall. It's to the amount of eight hundred dollars. We had to make some adjustments around the garage area with the blockwork.
This is M.D.J. Solomon's.
Correct.
Any questions?
Wall looks very nice.
I think it does. Thank you.
In motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Clear side?
Aye.
Carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Jason, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Jason Yorks has five point four, five point five, and five point six.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Commissioners, first the line of approval is five point four. This is for the purchase of a two thousand fifteen Caterpillar water truck, the amount of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. This is a twenty-twenty-one budgeted item that we brought before you last year when we were building our budget. This is to replace a two thousand and one International truck that we had a water chassis on. We, as you understand, when you were over there Friday at the Digger Area, we have to maintain all the dust control that we can. Previously, we always had a truck with a CDL on-road trucks, as you will, to truck leachate or to do water or whatever we needed it for. Now that we have two horse mains up and running, we're more apt to need a vehicle used more on the off-road sense. This chassis looks as same as a haul truck that hauls the dirt. It's the same size, like a forty-ton haul truck that you're familiar with that we have over here. So this will be a vehicle we can put in the waste and keep the dust down there and over in the farm and of course, all the roads. Because anytime dust comes out on Route Fifteen or anywhere else, we can get sighted by the department.
So, Jason, this is a used vehicle, right? It's a used truck. It's about six years old?
Yes, sir. It's a used chassis and the tank on it is, I believe, one year old. We also use this equipment to wash out the hauler's boxes. A lot of times, the boxes need washed out before they go back on the road. A lot of times, the boxes need washed out before they go back on the road. So they'll lift the box up, and we'll be up on the working face. They have, as we call it, a deck gun, master stream, that can blast the water out and clean the box out as well.
And you need to do that so you don't end up having a DEP violation where they exit the landfill and they're dripping leachate?
Well, correct. It just, generally, sometimes in the colder weather, you'll get things frozen, stuck in the box. And we want the hauler, the hauler's gonna want an empty box, so we use it to clean out.
I guess it's just me. I mean, you're looking at almost a quarter of a million dollars for a water truck, and a used one to boot, to boot. And when you're talking that kind of money, it just seems like it, it should be used for, utilized for other functions, that it should be a multi-use vehicle. I'm assuming that the water tank stays on it permanently?
Yes, sir. We take it across over in the farm property, doing the dirt work, shale pit down, I mean, it's pretty universal in a sense. But it just, what we're, our problem is, we take our trucks that we would put on the highway, so we have a Mack and this old International, and we put it up in the waste. Then you are having tire issues, you're having, it doesn't go well in the mud. This is a chassis built for a landfill. We were trying to actually get too many uses out of our previous chassis. Because you take a nice truck that you're gonna put on the highway with a tank, and you're gonna go down through a dirt field or up into the working face, which you understand how rough that is, then you have problems on the other, on the flip side of the coin. This would be a vehicle that doesn't go up and down Route Fifteen. We don't take it to sewer plants. This is, this would be strictly for the facility. We have to water the roads every day. Even yesterday, when the storm come through, I think around four-thirty I was here, during the day, we still had to water the roads. So it has a five-thousand-gallon capacity, which gets us around the facility about one time, one and a half trips with watering roads, and then we'll fill it back up.
When, the current vehicle, which is the 2001, did we buy that used also? And how long have we been using that?
I, that I believe we purchased new. That was long before my appointment. But it is just short of fifteen thousand hours of runtime. We don't do miles, we do hours of run.
Right. And it's been twenty years?
Twenty years.
How many hours are in the new one?
It's roughly four hundred fifty thousand.
Yeah.
It was what?
Just a couple of years. I don't believe, I don't have the count.
Like an average, at thirty-five miles an hour, but at fifty thousand?
How much is a new one?
Four hundred fifty thousand.
Well, if you could get one, it would definitely be a lot more. It'd be probably four hundred thousand, three hundred, four hundred thousand. I mean, a new truck chassis, a Mack truck with a water tank's gonna exceed what this price is too.
So this has on it, it's got a three-year warranty, thousand hours extended on the powertrain. How many hours are on it already?
I'm just asking.
Oh, I didn't, he was.
He didn't answer.
Oh, you're not sure?
You're not sure?
Oh, no, it has five thousand, three hundred ninety-six hours. It's a 2015 Caterpillar truck with five thousand, three hundred ninety-six hours. And you got on the last one fifteen thousand hours?
Correct.
If we were to table this, Jason, would this have any effect on the purchase maybe next week?
Um, I would say, because Caterpillar was, this is the one they had available. And we can, if you wish to, Commissioner, what is your concerns for, and this is something, we, we do need a water truck. It is, we have the money, we, I just think it's a reminder, we set nine dollars a ton aside for capital purchases, that we try to keep our upgrades. We are behind the times with getting our equipment, and that's why there seems to be quite a few items on the list, but we are trying to get caught back up.
Is this truck breaking down? I mean, are you gonna get any resale value out of this?
Very little. The last two years, we've spent seventeen thousand dollars on repairs.
That's, that's small in comparison to two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Commissioner, it only has right now eleven thousand dollar trade-in value.
Well, so you said something, you said, this is the one that Caterpillar has available right now. But I guess one question that I would want to know is, if we held off a little, could we find somewhere else? I mean, this is a big, a big country, right? Is there somewhere else, either in Pennsylvania or within the states here, another, another one of these available that is either new or with fewer hours? You've already got one-third of the hours on this truck that you are, have on the one that you're getting rid of. And I guess one of our questions is, if you didn't get this today, could you still use the one you're using a while longer until you're able to search out what other options there are?
Yeah, we can.
Well, but do you feel there are other options out there? I mean, I understand Caterpillar contacted you and said, hey, we have this. But, you know, if you guys looked around, do you think you'd find?
We can, we can definitely keep looking. We have, I believe the John Deere that we looked at was also used.
How much was the John Deere?
What's that?
How much was the John?
Yeah, we, when we reach out, sir, we reach out to all heavy equipment vendors.
Right.
And we try to pick the best of what's money value and what's available. We can certainly look for newer.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want you to think that I don't think you've been doing your job searching. That's not, that wasn't my, my point. My only point was that this has one-third of the hours of what we're trading in, and...
Two-thirds of the cost.
Yeah. But, you know, if you think, like, for example, on, on the one you brought to us last week, you thought it was an exceedingly good deal. And I guess my question is, is this an exceedingly good deal, or is it just mediocre, so to speak?
Well, it's, again, it's what we had available. It's on the lot through Cleveland Brothers, and the other one was through Five Star. We can tell them to go look farther. Because a lot of times, dealerships can make trades with other dealerships to try to bring something else in.
Yeah.
Keep looking. I guess, I guess my only, my only warning is that it's not gonna be, you know, if we bring something newer, it's gonna have a bigger price tag. I just want to be, so you understand. I mean, I'm, I'm good with that. I just wanted you to understand that.
You know, and here again, maybe I'm suspicious, I don't know, but used vehicles and used cars and used trucks go more now than what they did in the past. Are we purchasing things in a time where they're gonna make their profits, I mean, huge profits?
Especially with the hours on it.
I'm actually not in favor of this at this, at this point in time.
But you can't think of these hours like you do on the T eights and the compact? No, I don't. But if you think that, we, the one we're getting rid of has fifteen thousand hours on it. So this is, this has got more than...
Vote one?
But this has more than a third? I mean, in other words, we're... If you do it into mileage the way you did, right? So it's like, we're buying a used vehicle or a used entity with, it just seems like, relative to what we're paying, the hours are high. But I guess you're telling us that something, of course, something with lower hours is gonna have, it's gonna have...
Hey, see if they'll bring it into like the one, one ninety range, and we can take a vote on it.
Yeah, there's an idea, to go back to them and tell them the commissioners aren't willing to pay that much money for it, and if they wanna offer it for, to us, as Commissioner, you were suggesting one ninety. That's a good idea.
Yeah, Jason, I think, from my perspective, I think we're just settling with what their recommendation is. There's not, there's not an immediate need. There's a need, but not an immediate need. We do have time. This isn't broken down where it's not working at all. So I think we have some time yet to do a little bit more research and try to find a better, what concerns me is the hours on the used one. To have more than a third of what we have now at that price time, that price tag, I don't think's economical.
I'll move to table. I'll say.
On this side?
Aye.
Commissioners, next item was the 2021 CAT telehandler in the amount of a hundred sixty-six thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollars. This is a budgeted item as well. This replaced a 2005 telehandler that's at fifty-three hundred hours. This is a incredibly multipurpose piece of equipment. We, we use it for anything and everything. The gas crew, recycling, up for landfill, unload trucks, trailers. If it has a bad food load, even up and including, the local fire company has utilized this machine with our staff to help extricate bariatric patients out of the home. So this is a, this machine, it was a seventy-five thousand. We've already put fifty-one thousand on most fifty-two thousand in repairs. We are only recommending the purchase of this machine. This is a, this is an important machine across our mass.
Any questions?
Also.
Sorry, go ahead. So I, that last part you just mentioned, you've spent fifty thousand repairing the existing one?
Correct. Fifty, we're fifty-one, six of nine, it's on our books right now, go please. This is a machine that's an all-wheel-drive, four-wheel-drive machine. It has a boom system with a set of forks. This is a system that we use for anything and everything.
Now, what's gonna happen to the old one?
It'll be traded in, sir.
And what's the trade-in value?
I don't have the, I do not have a sale receipt in front of me, Commissioner.
It's like twenty-three?
I believe you have that.
Twenty-three thousand was 2005.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions? I have movement?
I'll move to approve.
I'll say. On this side?
Aye.
Right, period.
Next item, commissioners, is the purchase of a D eight T dozer, Caterpillar D eight, in the amount of three hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars. This is the main piece of the equipment that we use to push our waste from the tipping area at the working face up into the slopes for the compactor that they use. This machine that we are trading in is being utilized in the buyback program, where it's two years or forty-eight, two years, excuse me, five thousand hours and twenty-four months. We, this machine's also the one I pointed out that previously replaced, what we called Dozer Twenty-One, machine that we did three rebuilds on, and it come out that the hourly rate basically cost us around fifty-six dollars an hour to operate the old dozer. The one that we've just, that we're trading in is down at twenty-five, twenty-six dollars an hour to operate. Caterpillar has made a very nice offer in the sense that the buyback, the actual buyback of the new machine in two years from now would be four hundred and five thousand dollars. We are out of pocket right now for the machine at three hundred and thirty-eight, six ninety-five. This item was on budget for 2022, but given the hours, if we drive, if we use it past our hours, we will no longer be able to utilize buyback program for the twenty-four months, five thousand hours. So the, with the buyback program, now, it right, currently, the machine needs a six thousand dollar undercarriage rebuilt, and we wish to put that machine in the trade-in system and get a new machine.
We had a discussion about this last week, and Commissioner Beale had a lot of questions. Commissioner Star had some too, and we asked you to do some research, and we received an email from Steve Sims, a very thorough explanation of everything. Thanks, Steve, on behalf of us, breaking it down, basically, how much per hour. And that was a great email, and an excellent explanation.
And I think this has been, this analysis of the buyback program versus trying to repair these has been an ongoing work for the last five years or so, where, you know, you and Dave and now Steve have been trying to compare what it costs us when we keep this equipment and sort of run it into the ground, so to speak, in terms of repairs and the time it's not able to do what it's supposed to do, which we lose money doing, as opposed to trying to have some balance of getting equipment that's reliable and can keep the RMS moving. So actually, if you kept it for forty-eight months, you'd get two hundred and forty thousand on buyback?
Absolutely. But we will, by then, we will have invested more money in the rebuilds, which then, of course, they all need depreciated, and Steve's calculations take in every factor financially.
Yeah, dude, yeah, very good. That, that, that extra five thousand hours really ends up costing us a bit of money here?
Yes, sir. It does.
I'll move to table. On this side?
Aye.
Aye. Jason, please stay with us on the phone for Commissioner comments. And Jason, thank Steve Sims and Dave for that great work they did on that, okay? And you too.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Okay, the last six items are Krista McLaughlin, who is on the line.
Kristen, if you want to do all six, we can vote them on them as a whole, as a slate?
I can do that.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely. Sure. So the first one is a 2020, a federal fiscal year 2020 CB subrecipient agreement in the amount of fifty-five thousand dollars, that is between the county and the American Rescue Workers. There is a federal fiscal year 2020 CB subrecipient agreement in the amount of nineteen thousand, seven hundred seventy-six dollars, and that is with the counties Wycombe and the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank. Those are both coronavirus response programs. There is two agreements between the county and CEDOC. One is for federal fiscal year twenty compliance or professional service agreement in the amount of one hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars. The other one is an amendment to the 2018 professional service agreement. That total amount is one hundred eight thousand, one hundred twenty dollars. That is not the change. The change is actually, because of a budget, budget revision, we moved some projects around, and it is adding the Center for Independent Living Rooftop Air Conditioning Unit delivery cost to that. The environmental review being four thousand dollars, and the Davis Bacon and Related Act cost being thirty-nine hundred dollars. So that one hundred eight thousand, one hundred twenty dollars is just the total for the entire agreement. There is also an MOU with the Wycombe County Housing Authority. This is to act as the responsible entity and execute the environmental review documentation that's necessary for the Wycombe County Housing Authority's 2022 through 2026 projects. That is a requirement since they are not a unit of general local government, and a general, a unit of general local government, or what we call an UGLUG, is required to execute the environmental review document. This is, and this is an MOU that is entered into, as far as I'm aware, every year between the county and the housing authority. And lastly is a 2020 CBG CB subrecipient agreement in the amount of fifty-five thousand, five hundred eighty-three dollars, and that is between the county and Jersey Shore Borough. So that, the Shore Borough will have access to their CB, which is the coronavirus response fund, to get their projects going.
Okay, any questions?
And I believe that is it.
That is. Any action, or any questions on action items seven, five point seven through five point twelve?
Just good projects, and there are a few there that I think we can also help support with the ARP funds.
Yeah, specifically, just to, the American Rescue Workers will go through similar projects that Steph went through. projects that Steph went through, um, the Steph one went through, which is rent, mortgage and utility assistance, um, and the food bank, the food bank one will specifically, um, help the Central Pennsylvania Food Bank, um, in responding, they've seen a huge uptick in the need for, um, food at its variety of, um, distribution sites, and so this will go towards helping those. And, um, Jersey Shores is also going towards rental utility and mortgage assistance for residents of Jersey Shore Borough.
Okay, great. And some of these are pass-through in the sense, for example, the Jersey Shore decision was made by the Jersey Shore folks, right?
Um, Jersey Shore decided on its project, yes, but it, its contract comes through the county, so...
Right.
The county gives the money to Jer, essentially gives the money to Jersey Shore, and then Jersey Shore will act, will have its own agreement with those service providers in order to, um, officially distribute those funds. But yes, all of the, all of these monies are essentially pass-through in some component where the money is coming from the C D B G program.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Motion to accept action item five point seven through five point twelve as a whole. I'll move to group.
I'll second.
All three say aye?
Aye.
So period.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Commissioner comment?
So, I'd like to make a comment regarding our recycling across the county. We continually have locations that are having illegal dumping at their sites. Uh, there's been a lot of articles recently on social media and the news. Uh, this continues to be a problem. It's extended now to the American Rescue Workers at their sites, uh, where clothes are being dropped off, and people are illegally dumping there, um, dumping couches, all kinds of things. At our sites, we've had windshield, sinks, toilets, um, this is illegal dumping. Garbage, the Third Street site on Monday was disgusting, to say the least, and it's costing taxpayers money, because the municipalities have to haul away someone else's garbage. So is a taxpayer paying for these illegal dumpers? So encourage the public, if you see any of these individuals, write down their license numbers and report to the authorities. Don't get out and confront them, just write down their license number, turn it over to the authorities. Some of these sites have cameras, some of them don't, some of them, cameras are broken. Uh, what I understand on one up at Third Street, they're at the wrong angle, they're adjusting those angles. The Torresville posted two individuals yesterday that have illegally dumped at their sites. They have very good pictures of those individuals. Hopefully, somebody from the public will recognize them and turn them in, and they'll be prosecuted. And until people are prosecuted, I, I can't see this going away. And it's costing everyone money, because there's a few that are ruining for the majority. We've heard from Upper Fairfield, where their township supervisors have had enough, and they don't want the residents hauling away other people's garbage, and they asked for the boxes to be removed, and they were removed. And that hurts everyone in Upper Town, Upper Fairfield Township. So, um, again, we stress that if you see these individuals, um, write down their license numbers and report them, because they're gonna continue to do this behavior until they're caught and prosecuted. So unfortunately, we live in a time in society where we have this going on on a regular basis, and it's getting worse. And, uh, Jason, do you wanna add anything to it? I ask you to stand in line. You, you've heard these complaints, you've seen the pictures, and, uh...
Commissioner, thank you for the, drawing the attention of the subject. The items that have been placed out along the fence, the illegal dumping, unfortunately has been going on for twenty years, just with those openings, they were able to, uh, throw it on RMS and on the containers. And enough was enough. I mean, the markets, the markets are struggling as it is with recycling. But now I do see, um, a better public, I see a, a public on social media and in the news that is, uh, better informed, that has now taken a lot of, a lot of people are taking notice on themselves and trying to help facilitate the cleaning of the sites. We get phone calls daily about what they can do to help. The camera system has improved. I've had, uh, great working relationships now with all the municipalities, for the most part, they're all trying to do something. They don't wanna see it go away from the public, but in the same time, they, they, they are all stepping up to help us. So I think, Commissioner, we are heading in the right direction, um, staying optimistic. The markets are strong, we don't wanna see the drop-off sites go away. I just think it's, it's time that the public is, or educated about what people, some, a select few have been getting away with. And I, I think that's, it's, it's all in the right direction, sir. That's all, I'll leave it at that.
Well, illegal dumping's illegal dumping. You can't stick a toilet.
Nope.
You can't stick a sink. You can't stick a couch in that little bin. And people know that, and they continue to try to get away with it.
I was very encouraged with the Torresville Police Department's post yesterday.
So was I.
That was, that was what we need.
Yep. Okay, any other comments?
So, um, some, and this, the public may or may not remember this, but, uh, a while back, the commissioners expressed concern about the changes that were proposed by the, um, Office of Management and Budget with what's called the Metropolitan Statistical Area, the M S A, and, um, it had been brought to our attention by...
Jason, there.
But, well, by, the Center for Rural Pennsylvania had sent us an email, actually, before, Jason, yeah.
Back in March.
Yeah, and March, that's right. And, uh, the Center for Rural P A is a bipartisan, bicameral, meaning it's got senators and representatives on it, uh, agency of the General Assembly. I, I sat on it when I was in the state legislature, and it's a very, uh, a very good, uh, organization, that, uh, helps rural Pennsylvania, Center for Rural P A helps rural Pennsylvania to understand what's going on and also to try to bring attention. Senator Yaw is the chairman. So they brought this to our attention, and we had a number of phone calls with, uh, with our federal and state elected representatives, and with, uh, Jason Fink from the Chamber of Commerce, and, uh, with some other folks. And, uh, Senator Yaw agreed to hold a hearing, um, agreed to have the Center for Rural P A hold a hearing on the impact of the change in the M S A on rural communities. Uh, you remember, they were gonna change it from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand. And what we found, uh, one of the interesting points that we found out at that hearing, which the three of us attended, was that no one really knew in the federal government how changing the M S A was gonna affect things, but they did have some inkling, or they had some idea that it would, uh, affect C D B G funds, it would affect the allocation of other money. And I, I think that, um, what Senator Yaw did can be credited with helping us to draw attention, uh, to, uh, to the problem. And the good news is that the Office of Management and Budget on July thirteenth announced that they are not going to change it, they're gonna leave the fifty thousand. So ring one up for, for us in Rural P A, bringing to the attention of the country that, that, before you change things, we need to know how it affects not just urban and suburban areas, but also rural Pennsylvania. And, uh, I wanna thank Senator Yaw for doing that, and the folks, the staff people at the Center for Rural P A who had their ear to the ground and who alerted us about that. And I know that the three of us were thrilled to hear that that wasn't gonna happen.
Yeah, this was, this was major, uh, in the sense that Pennsylvania was, was the highest state that would have been affected. There was nine regions, I think Alabama and Michigan was second with five. But we would have had nine regions, State College would have been one, Gettysburg area...
Wayne's Port.
Wayne's Port, East Stroudsburg area, and, uh, a, as a result, we would have lost forty-three million, million dollars in Medicare. So, um, that was just one example. So it was crucial that this didn't go through, and there was over five hundred letters written, um, in protest, Congressman Keller, uh, there was Senator Yaw, uh, everyone wrote letters. We wanna thank everyone, uh, it was in opposition of the, of the change. So it was definitely a victory for rural Pennsylvania, uh, because it would have been detrimental to the C D E G funds, especially the Medicare funds. And, uh, so, it was certainly good news.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, public comment?
None. Here, on here.
Okay. Anything from the audience? Hearing none, we, uh, completed our agenda, so we are adjourned to next Tuesday, July twenty-seventh, here in this room. Thank you, have a good week. Still on? It's all right.
You know anything about the census? What move results in the back? There it is.
Yeah? Thought that'd get rid of it.
I just, I just better know, I don't know about this. Bring the census.
Yeah.
Well, I know.
But we're on a month-long...
Didn't really come out yet.
In the old place, and...
Right. Yeah, you see.
We need to find a new way of taking the census.
If you would close all the... People would just throw it out.
They would, yes.
What's going on to, going on to the skyline?
It was terrible.
And you, you just, you just...
It was terrible.
The tires are up there. That's what people would do. It's, it's, I mean, people are gonna do what they're gonna do. I, I mean, it's such a... I hate it. I mean, I just see that, and I'm just...
I get mad when I see people throwing cigarettes, but, uh...
Yeah, it's just, there's no...
Well, now, even, even in, even in Montgomery Borough, some people just put it out in front of the house, holding it, take it, you know? A couch or something, uh, that'll get rained on, get rained on.
Oh, I know.
Anyway, yeah, it's one of those things.
It seems to get worse.
Right.
There was no, uh, no talk today.
No, next week, a lot of people are on vacation, a lot of people.
Yeah, I plugged it this week, so...
Yeah, so we're good.
I would like to see it, I do.
Yeah, thank you. Were you here for Hutch?
Oh, he did a great job. I was, I was gonna write just on that, but I thought, I just didn't wanna...
We had a, a, one last week that wasn't a county employee, that did such a good job that she could have been an informant. It was the IRP program with, with Rochelle Abbott.
Yeah.
Abbott with, uh, Steph, you know, that could have been a series alone.
Yeah.
The education she provided was phenomenal.
I know, I know. This is, this is, I was a skeptic over this one, but I, I guess this, this has been good.
Good, me too.
Educate the public, absolutely, absolutely.
Thanks. Keep up the good work, you guys.
Yep.
Eight, five, eight, six, are they trade-ins?
Yeah. Yeah, trade-ins.
What's a cat tele...
What's that?
What's a cat tele...
He's a picture of a utility, uh, machine that, I mean, it's, it's used for a lot of different things that are there.